Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Hoffman Estates Transportation and Road Improvement Committee for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Would this secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Mills?
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Trustee Palafas?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes? Anybody noted? Seeing none, can we have a roll call to approve?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairman Mills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you. They are approved. New business tonight. We have two items. First one, request authorization to award contract for Phase One engineering services for the Gannon Drive resurfacing and bicycle facility project to Trans Systems of Schaumburg, Illinois in an amount not to exceed one hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Wenderski?
So this project is on Gannon Drive between Gulf Road and Higgins Road with the scope of work being pavement resurfacing and evaluating alternatives for providing bicycle facilities along that stretch. Released the RFP to pre-qualified consultants and upon review, staff determined that Trans Systems provided the best proposal. So through negotiations of the scope fee and hours, see the one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars not to exceed them out is what they came out to be. I just want to highlight that due to the Gulf Road and Higgins Road on the termini of this project, there's a lot of involvement with IDOT. And as we've worked through the Phase One process, there may be items that come up that IDOT would require to do as we make design choices that they could bring the potential for additional work being required depending on what the scope of that work moving forward would be.
Okay. Any idea when this work's going to try and be done?
So this Phase One engineering work would be scheduled to be completed by the spring of next year, which would then allow us to move forward with the design engineering and hope to position the project to apply for future construction funding after that.
Okay. Any other questions up here? Trustee Stanton?
So work on the road itself would not be done until at least two thousand twenty-five?
Correct, yeah. Probably that would be probably aggressive to get to that point.
How long has that road been in the condition that it's been in now without having to do any work on it?
Yeah, it's pushing over twenty years right now. We'll continue to evaluate. There's definitely the likely that, you know, some type of patching maintenance would be completed, you know, from now till the time that full work gets done to just to maintain the appropriate condition.
Okay. And just for the record, fifty thousand of that's being paid for by Cook County out of rental grants.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Could we please take a roll call vote?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairman Mills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you. We have all ayes. Motion passes. Next, item number two is request authorization to waive bidding and purchase castings for use on the two thousand twenty-three street revitalization project from Nina Enterprises Incorporated out of Carroll Stream, Illinois, and EJ Company, New Lenox, Illinois in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mr. Wenderski.
Among the many disruptions in construction activities last year, we definitely noted that castings were something that a significant lead time was occurring on. We were fortunate that didn't run into major issues with it last year. But looking at the situation, it hasn't improved and lead times for some of these materials are, you know, upwards of four months right now. So what we'd be looking to do to avoid delays with our work on the street project this year would be to purchase some of these for village stock and store them for our contractors so that we can hopefully continue to work on our streets throughout the year without waiting for these long lead times. There's really two, only two suppliers here. Their prices vary a little bit between their products, but they also vary on their availability. So having the ability to kind of go to each one when things are needed would be what we'd be looking for. And the total order that shows here, that's about half of what would be needed for a whole street project. But given what the lead times are, we certainly be able to get by for several months on this order while our contractor would put in their order for the remainder of that. Would not expect there to be any cost really incurred above what we'd normally spend for these items because we're purchasing them one way or the other.
Okay, so you're buying them from two different companies?
Correct.
Do either of the companies have a problem? I mean, will the prices change at all when they don't get the full order?
Yeah, no, we verified that with both vendors.
Okay.
Now, unless the order was really small, the price wouldn't change. It's kind of a ten thousand pound mark if we make that amount. They would, you know, give us delivery for free. That sounds like a lot, but it's not that many. These are pretty heavy.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairman Mills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
We have all ayes. Motion is approved. Under reports for information-only purposes, we have the Transportation Division Monthly Report. Any concerns or questions on that? Anything you want to highlight or add? No? Okay, thank you. We'll mark that as received and filed. President's report.
Yes, I was happy to add an email that a gentleman sent to Chief Colley. "I'm sending you a brief note of appreciation for the outstanding law enforcement support we have received during our six-week trip to Florida. As retired seniors, my wife and I have been doing this each year for about eight years. I never thought of alerting the police department. This year, we decided to do that and contacted Officer Matthew Park. We already have our away days and providing some information on our home alarm program, et cetera. We're amazed when our Ring camera alerts us of person detected almost every day. I would say officers came by about four or five times a week. They typically check the front doors, back door, et cetera. Even trudging through the six inches of snow we all got a few weeks ago. This is far beyond where our expectations were. We are impressed and amazed at this level of service. My wife and I have been living in Hoffman Estates since August nineteen eighty-four, almost thirty-eight years. We have nothing but positive experiences with law enforcement and all their city services too, for that matter. Please communicate our appreciation to your department for this excellent service. I want them to know that we citizens do not take their work for granted. Last week, I participated in a Zoom meeting briefing on the State of the Union address that President Biden gave later that evening. On Wednesday the eighth, we had our senior luncheon, which was a sellout. Man, it was mobbed. It was great. Then I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Board meeting that evening. Thursday, we had Kevin Kramer. He can have developed this CRE tour event. We had a bunch of realtors and brokers that came to the Now Arena to learn what was going on in Hoffman Estates and then enjoyed the Windy Cities Bulls game. And then at noon, we attended the emergency room annex grand opening and blessing at St. Alexius. They, this is a great improvement because they'll be able to take people that are having serious mental issues and put them in a separate emergency room so they won't be in the hallways of the regular emergency room. And so this will make a huge difference over there. And I attended the Fourth of July meeting at four o'clock that evening. On Friday the tenth, I attended the Aware Noise Compatibility Commission Annual Meeting in Displanes. And then the National Cities Transportation Infrastructure Services Committee meetings that afternoon. Saturday morning, we had the Super Bowl Food Drive Event at Gigi's Playhouse in conjunction with the Lions Club of Hoffman Estates in Schaumburg. They brought a lot of stuff in. It was great. Then we attended a Blue Bull Ceremony of Cubs Cup Act Two ninety-seven at St. Hubert's. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before this committee? Trustee Palafas?
So I talked to a number of folks today, trustee Mills being one and Eric Palm, our manager, about how we ran into some folks that have the disability of blindness and are struggling finding transportation and asked if we could put something on maybe one of the future agendas as a review. I know the social worker and some others have been engaged, so that's good. We're on it to get them some help. But if we could just do a follow-up more formally, and that'll be spread across the four townships. We have various different offerings in collaboration with those other government entities. That'd be great to kind of figure out some of the niche, you know, that we can't always reach as easily. That's all for me. Thanks.
Probably be a good time to do an update on every, all the different county, townships.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good. Thank you. Please put that on our agenda for a future meeting. Is there anything else to come before this committee tonight? We have no items in review. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please take a roll call.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairman Mills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Stanton?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Aye, aye, here.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Sorry. Okay. Trustee Palafas?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present.
We do have a quorum. Looking for approval of the minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing seeing none, we need a roll call.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Stanton?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Leads us to new business. We have three items first. Request by Bell Tire for courtesy review for a tire and service store located at fourteen hundred Gannon Drive.
Good evening. My name's Shannon Green. I'm one of the civil engineers working on this proposed Bell Tire development. I work with Enright Architects and we're proposing this second Bell Tire development in Hoffman Estates. It's located on the southwest corner of Gannon Drive and Higgins Road. It was previously part of a different development and the Bell Tire has come in to take the place of what was originally proposed there.
Before you go any further, can I read this to you, a statement of understanding?
Certainly.
Do you understand that your appearance before the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee shall not constitute any village board endorsement, support, or implied approval of the subject property? And you also understand that the final project approval or denial shall only occur through official village board action?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So the proposed development, this is just in the very beginning stages. This is the proposed possible site plan. It would be a ten thousand square foot Bell Tire building with the associated infrastructure and stormwater management that would be required. We just have some examples of the four-floor plan from previous Bell Tire developments and some examples of the exterior of the building, which is all brick and glass. So we just wanted to illustrate some of the exterior views. And aside from that, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have in relation to Bell Tire and its proposed development.
What made Bell Tire decide to choose this site?
Well, we have another, another site in Hoffman Estates as well, and they felt that Hoffman Estates was an excellent location based on their market analysis. And there's only two other locations that have two sites, Joliet and Aurora. So this site has excellent view. You can see it, you know, it's on a very busy street and they just felt that it was an excellent location for as far as traffic and, you know, visibility.
Did they ever look at the site across the street where just tires used to be?
I am not certain of that. I'm not sure about that. I'll have to ask.
Okay. Right now, to get to the bank, it's contorted. Is there going to be some other easier access to get to the bank through you or on the backside? Because on the backside, there's no entrance. They stop you. You can only go one way and that's only to the drive-up lanes, not into the actual store or the bank itself. Is that going to be changed in any way?
As far as the current site plan is concerned, we just have cross-access easements with the bank. And then there's a access to the access road to the south of the Bell Tire site. But I am not certain. We have a little bit more development and due diligence to do to see if there would be any additional access location.
Jennifer or Pete, what about the back access into the BMW bank? BMO, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So there, there will be cross-access through the two lots. So there's two lots right now. Lot two is where the new bank is. So cross-access easements are already provided across lot one and across two, lot two. The access from Higgins will be the right-in, right-out that provides direct access to the bank right now. As proposed on the plan now, there is an access drive at the south end of the bank that would then, it deadens now, but will continue and connect into the lot one development. But primary access off of Gannon would be through the Acura car lot, through that cross-access that's provided there.
Right. What I'm saying though is that they don't allow you to go further north to do other than the drive-up. They only have one lane and that allows you to go south towards the access road and then you can go on to Gannon.
What you're saying is around the bank?
Yeah, so you will be able to get, if you go through the drive-through, you can come back out and then, yeah.
The drive-through, yes. But I'm talking about going to the front of the bank, through the back.
Through the back, yes, yes. You'll be able to go through the Bell Tire site to get to the front of the bank.
So there's going to be a side there that they're going to allow you to go through without having to go through the whole Bell Tire?
No, it will, it will have to be through Bell Tire. There's the exit only through, for the bank there.
Yeah. I would like you to think about maybe putting an access, an access road somehow, a little strip between these two if you can, if there's a possibility, I don't know, so that you can go to the front without having to go through Bell Tire. Or making the other access road that allows you to go south, two ways, one or the other.
Yeah, it's certainly something we can look at, how it can connect into the, to the lot, lot two there.
All right, any one, yes, trustee Mills?
First of all, I just want to correct staff. Your courtesy review, Google image, you have Governor's Lane on there instead of Gannon.
Oh, excuse me. Thanks, thanks for that.
I caught that one. Also, as to what trustee Stanton's saying, yeah, it's an awkward try to get in. The bank's drive-through didn't work out as well as it could have, I think. What's the status on the other Bell Tire?
It is currently approved and in the middle of the like bidding and contractor selection phase.
Okay, because we've been anxiously awaiting that one for quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions or concerns? No?
It looks like it's quite a ways before it's ready for planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at this time, they're really just looking for some feedback on the use itself. They will, of course, have to go through the full site plan approval process and development review with staff before it would come back, before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, it's not what I was looking for. It's not what we were originally told that we were going to get. But it's a business and it's going to bring in income. Go ahead, Eric.
And maybe a question for Jenny and Pete, not to put you on the spot, but that site is a little challenging in terms of its location and any other business that would come in there from a traffic, a flow perspective. I mean, maybe you could just speak in understanding trustee Stanton's concerns, some of the other challenges on that site going forward.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you could say, oh, this would be a great place for a drive-through coffee shop, but that would also generate a significant amount of traffic in an area that is pretty congested.
Yeah, and I think we've already recognized it's, the access is a little challenging with the limited right-in, right-out off of Higgins and then, of course, the access on Gannon being off of the property. So yeah, certainly something with the drive-through would be challenging to fit on the site and get the, the traffic that's, you know, coming off of Higgins to where they want to go. But so I guess from a site plan perspective, not having a drive-through, I think, helps with this limited access to may, may work here better than, than something like a restaurant with a drive-through.
You know, there's a huge evergreen tree there that when you're making your right-hand turn, the way they've built that little access road, it's, if you have a guy coming southbound and you're going northbound, the two cars are going to collide. Luckily, it's not that heavy traffic right now. But if that's going to be the same access to get in to Bell Tire and your way of getting out of the bank, that could be a bad situation. So that's going to have to be cleaned up for sure.
Sure.
Go ahead.
That access road off of Gannon, who's responsible for it? Is it Acura or would it be this property?
It's Acura's property. It's on their lot. They may have an agreement where the owner of the bank lot contributes towards that, but it is on the Acura lot.
Okay, because that road's always in pretty bad condition.
Yes.
So it's something, I know now they've filled in a couple of those huge potholes, but we really need to see some improvement in that if this project goes in there too.
Trustee Palafas?
Shannon, as a civil engineer, what do you think the challenges are for the site?
Well, I definitely agree that the access is somewhat of a challenge. We have, we're in the middle of the due diligence right now trying to investigate all of these issues, but, so, you know, from that perspective, there's more to investigate. We have to also do some more as far as the stormwater management is concerned and the permitting. I know there was some MWRD coordination with the Bank of America site and some of the permitting that we were doing there. So there's just some things we need to investigate from that perspective, but I do think that the access is probably the one thing that we would need to look into more, specifically for like the trucks that need to deliver supplies and things like that, so.
Would it have been easier if the access that was further north on Gannon or just south of Higgins was still there? I mean, for whatever reason, we closed that access. And I'm thinking that would have been a lot easier for trucks and also to get into the bank and out of the bank.
Across access, there was an access from like in alignment with the cross-access easement onto Gannon Drive?
Yes.
Close to where you've got that number fifteen on there?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. That would be easier access for truck maneuvering.
And that was taken out just this last year, and I still don't understand it, but...
Yeah, that was a condition of the site plan approval for the, the new bank. I think the concern really was the proximity to the busy intersection and, you know, cars backing up there, certainly, you know, trucks potentially could, could back up there. So that was one of the reasons why it was removed on a condition of the, the site plan approval.
That happened to be there for like forty years, and I don't remember recalling any accidents that occurred as a result. Trustee Palafas?
I guess the follow-up question that comes to mind is, do we have the latitude to change it back to something like that if we deem it's the right thing to do? I mean, I understand all of your reasons and why it is that way.
Well, we can, but to keep in mind the original condition that was there, it was inbound only.
Yeah.
Only served the bank drive-through. So there was no traffic leaving that driveway and it didn't really serve parking. I mean, you could technically get to the parking, but it was a very, very limited car-only entrance. It didn't really function as an exit. And I, I think it would be really difficult with traffic standards to have a full access point that close to Higgins Road in the middle of a left turn lane. It may, it's not necessarily an IDOT issue, but we have to be cautious about things that impact the intersection with Higgins, which does get into IDOT concerns. It's obviously something we'll look at with the traffic study, but I, I think, I think the reason we had it closed with the bank development was there was a recognition from a traffic standard standpoint that it's just not, it's not a safe location for anything that has any kind of volume of traffic.
I mean, the nice thing about a Bell Tire is people aren't just stopping by for ten seconds or two minutes. They're dropping their car off, they're leaving it for a while or staying with it. So, I mean, your use is in line.
Trustee Mills?
One suggestion, both to Bell Tire and possibly for the bank, are they ever going to put some type of a sign on that right-in, right-out? Because right now, all of a sudden, you come up to it and go, oh, here's where to get into the bank. So it really should be some type of sign for everybody's benefit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, noted.
Anyone else? Yes, trustee Arnett?
Not really a question, but I mean, I know that Gannon can be very crowded at times and people just kind of go their own way. But I know both of the dealers, the one on, the one side by the post office and then Acura, they also have trailers that come in and park on Gannon, just unload their vehicles. That's going to cause a little bit of congestion there and my thinking that way?
Yes, and ironically, that's the, the contract that Al brought before you earlier tonight to start evaluating the design. There, there's a significant number of issues like that along Gannon and just in that short stretch. And obviously, it's near the high school. It's got a lot of different things going on and we're trying to still accommodate pedestrians and bikes. So that's something that'll be evaluated carefully as part of that whole Gannon project that, that you saw at your last committee discussion.
Okay.
Anyone else before we close this out? Okay, I guess that's it for tonight and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, number two, we have a request by the Prime Company for a courtesy review of a multifamily development located at twenty-three hundred West Higgins Road, which is Barrington Square, Town Center.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, William Graft, Grafton, Jordan. It's a delight to be in front of you tonight. I'm just going to be introducing Chris Elsley, who's really the star of the show. While he's hooking up, chairman Stanton, would you like to make the statement?
I'll do the statement of understanding.
Sure.
You understand that your appearance before the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee shall not constitute any village board endorsement, support, or implied approval of the subject property? And you also understand that the final project approval or denial shall only occur through official village board action?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you a quick overview. Thank you for your time, the courtesy review. It's a, we're delighted that your village does this. I think it's very intelligent, but I'm very excited to be in front of you. But most important to introduce Chris and to share with you my observations as an outsider. This is a great time for Hoffman Estates to compliment your leadership, the consultants, the staff work that's been done to lay the groundwork for this, and we look forward to your feedback and it's a very exciting project. This is an economic development project bar none. You at the, your committee at the Hall, courtesy review with Tracy Cross, you all heard the market demand that's out there. And there are communities that are going to have Class A market rate rental projects And you're going to get, if you're able to work with Chris, the best of the best. So you have 10, Pete mentioned at the, at the meeting, about 10 projects in one form or another. And I believe that we can convince you, or Chris can, that this is the best of the best. You have, there's nothing like this, and it's a major investment that Chris and his company are willing to put forth. And this will really be a driving force for economic development. It's in a TIF, and this is exactly what you're planning and your brilliant staff and consultants have laid out. And I'm very excited for you. This is your time, and you deserve it. So Chris Elsley at the Prime Company.
Yeah, I'd also like to just echo, I think, just this process here today, the opportunity to do a courtesy review. That just from a developer's standpoint, I just really applaud you guys for doing this. We develop all over the country. And, yeah, a lot of times we don't get to the final decision-makers or get any input from them till the very, very end. And if we would have had an opportunity to talk with people, maybe it could have been a different outcome. So just off the cuff, that's a great, a great thing that you guys have going here. So to start with, just kind of an overview, I'm going to roll through this PowerPoint, but just some generalities there. I'm going to introduce kind of who we are, what we're about, some of our past experience, our past projects, and then we'll dig into the actual project. So again, I'm the owner of the Prime Company, my identical twin brother, the two of us, we started in 2005. Brian and I are Christians, and our faith's really important to us, and we try to leverage our business for the Kingdom of Jesus. And so I always think that's really an important question, like, well, why are these guys doing this or why are they doing it? And so ultimately, that's my kind of higher calling, I guess. And our company motto is love thy neighbor, and we try to bring that to the local level and really act that out and do that. And so what differentiates us from most developers is we're vertically integrated. So we basically do everything from start to finish and what it takes to build a multifamily asset. So we have 15 in-house architects. I went to Kansas State, that's where I'm from. It's in Manhattan, Kansas, a college town two hours west of Kansas City. But we do the architecture work ourselves with our own team. We act as our own general contractor. We build it, and then we hold on to it and manage it and have our own property management arm. So we started in 2005. We've got about 350 million that we've developed with our own equity, and we've never sold a property. And so we want to be going back to that kind of love thy neighbor. We want to be good neighbors. We're not just building these and flipping them. We feel like, hey, we want to be investing in communities that we can be a part of. And, yeah, so these are some of the areas that we're, we're in all four time zones. Kind of the areas that we identify are ones where there's high rent. And so where there's high rent, that's usually, it's a supply and demand problem. And so that's one of the reasons we're interested in this particular site is just the Chicagoland area in the greater kind of region has high rent. And so we're trying to provide a solution by having high-quality housing. And so we're currently building three projects right now, about 110 million under construction, one in Denver, Colorado, one next to, in South Central LA, next to USC, and then another one in San Diego. And these are just some images. Again, we act as the general contractor, so we're hiring local subcontractors and supplying the materials from, you know, the local labor force. Kind of another kind of different thing, this is going back to that, kind of that love thy neighbor thing. So we have our property management arm, but we also have a, what we call our resident life team. And so effectively, they're like, if you maybe think back to your college days, it's like your house mom or dad or your dorm floor RA or kind of like your cruise director. They're there to basically help facilitate community amongst our residents. And they do different events, or they'll teach different classes, or do different mentoring or life coaching. And we found that that makes happy residents, residents that have friends, they're more likely to renew their lease with us. And they're more likely to, even in this digital age, that's still the number one way we attract new tenants is just word of mouth. And so we kind of go a step further and really try to invest in our residents and provide services to them. And so we'll kind of dig into the actual site here. It's the former Menard site there in, yeah, in the Barrington Square area. It's a little over seven acres, so it's a pretty substantial site. Currently there, it's just a vacant field. It's kind of in this lower depression when you consider kind of the topography to thanks to the north, you can kind of see that. Some of the things that, again, attracted us to the area are the good access that it has, just with the highway system around there. The largest employer in Hoffman Estates is the hospital, and we're literally just across the street from them. And then I think as the consultant had mentioned in that report is, this is just off of CoStar. And when you look at the type of product we're building is a kind of a Class A multifamily market rate product. And when you look at the existing product that's available here in Hoffman Estates, there really hasn't been anything built really since the kind of early 90s. And a lot of it's kind of what I would say, it's a little outdated. And, yeah, we feel like there's a pent-up demand, and I think the, the study also alluded to that. And so kind of our targeted rents, the Element at Veridian there in Schaumburg, kind of an identifying thing. It's there next to the Topgolf with the kind of the tall towers there. That's kind of our market comp that we're looking at. Actually stopped by there before I came over here and talked a little bit to the leasing manager there. And they're at north of 95% occupancy. And I asked her, you know, just how they opened a little over a couple of years ago, and things have been going really well there. And so just to kind of give you an idea of, so they're over here, you know, and this is our site here. But that's kind of the market comp that we're working, we're looking at. And that would be like, I would really encourage you, like, if you're trying to visualize, well, hey, like, what type of product are they looking at? Like, go over there, walk around that, maybe see if they'll let you in the clubhouse. And that's the type of product that we're looking at trying to build here. And so again, the market rents there were, yeah, for the, the studio around 1700, a one-bed around 1900, and then the two-bed around 25, 2700. And so there's, you know, there's a bus, robust community spaces. I consider it almost kind of living at a resort as opposed to, you know, I think a lot of times people maybe have a stigma of apartments, maybe from things they've experienced in the past. But these are really dynamic communities that a lot of people, it's not that they don't have the means to have a single-family home. They choose this as a, just a lifestyle they'd rather pursue. And so, you know, there's, obviously, there's a workout facility, ample outdoor spaces. This is our project we're building in Denver to kind of give you, this is, I've got two interiors gals who do all of our interior design. And so this is just give you an idea of the product that we're building currently in Denver. So just roll through these. Pretty much, this has got like a rooftop deck with a, it's got a great view of the mountains there. This is the, the interior of the unit spaces. There would be balconies on most of the, on most of the units, the bathroom area. And so this is a rendering, this is a rendering of what we're actually proposing there at Hoffman Estates or in Hoffman Estates at the Barrington Road, the village there. And so this would be, this is kind of from the corner at the McDonald's, basically looking towards the north, the northwest. Yeah, this is a little further back. And then this is, we did have our neighborhood meeting, I think, believe that was two weeks ago. And this is kind of the existing, there's an existing road that kind of swings around there. So this, this is the view from that road. And that was one of the things that was mentioned in the neighborhood meeting was maybe coming up with some traffic calming devices or some way to try to slow down traffic. And so that's one of the things that we were proposing is providing parallel parking and kind of narrowing that street down to kind of slow folks down going around there. And then just having a more of a pedestrian landscape there when there's people walking along the street and doing things, they're just slowing down traffic. This is from the adjacent neighborhood, looking back towards the development. Before we went to the meeting, this is what they had requested, and so we mocked, I had our architects mock this up. And so this is a kind of a section cut of the building. To the peak of the roof, it's at 83 feet, and the adjacent property owner there is at 43 feet. And so this is a, just a general site plan of the building. We would, the majority of the parking would be in an internal structured parking garage, and it's wrapped with apartments. And so if you go back to these, the parking garage is basically behind the structure here. So you never, it's wrapped completely. You never see the structured parking garage. And then we'd have these courtyard areas here. That's where our amenity spaces would be, pool and maybe like a dog run and different things. And so overall, we'd be looking at efficiency, one in two-bedroom apartments. There'd be around 600 units there. The parking count we used was 1.3 stalls per unit, so there'd be about 780 stalls. Again, on our, the neighborhood meeting that we conducted, there were kind of two concerns that were primarily brought up. One was the traffic kind of going around this road here. And then the other was the potential, I guess, economic impact of the development and the potential of raising personal property taxes. I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's just what they, what the concern was. And this is, we have engaged Michael Worthman. He's a traffic engineer, and he's going to be doing an in-depth traffic analysis and parking study for us. And I had just done some preliminary things. These are kind of three-area apartment complexes that have similar unit mass to us. So I actually drove through this complex coming here. Yeah, the Barrington Lakes Apartments there, there's 790 units there, and it, there's 1,000 stalls there, and it's parked at 1.27. And then there's the Haven and the Remington Place Apartments. They're both at around 500 dwelling units. And so as you're, I think a lot of people with parking concerns, they see like a, maybe a duplex or a fourplex or a tenplex, and they'll have parking issues with it. But as you increase your just mass of parking, when you get up to like 400, 500 parking stalls, your demand, there's just enough kind of coming and going that you're, was what we've experienced. And I think what these complexes show as well is that that 1.3 parking stalls per unit is, I mean, that's north of what any of these other complexes are. And it would be my assertion that they don't have a parking problem. And so obviously, building structured parking is expensive, and we don't want to have too much parking, and we certainly don't want to have not enough parking. And so that's why we've engaged Michael to try to hit it on the head and have the correct amount of parking, so. But, yeah, so kind of our, the highlights, yeah, we're building, I think, any community having a diversity of housing stock's important. Again, I think you got a lot going on here. It's a great community, and I think this would hopefully add to kind of the marketing of the community to employee, employers. Yeah, the current state is kind of an unutilized land. It's a mixed-use area, which I think is attractive, and so we can have more of a, an urban pedestrian kind of little miniature neighborhood there in Barrington Square. All the existing utilities and stormwater and all those things are already in place, and I think it will certainly increase the tax base there. We're thinking the construction cost, we haven't bid everything out yet, obviously, but we're thinking it's going to be well over 125 million just from our investment into it. And it will certainly be valued north of that, so. And there's my contact information, that's my cell number and my email address. But I certainly appreciate any questions or feedback, and certainly don't be bashful, so.
I'm kind of surprised that Deshaun was willing to sell you also a parking lot that is utilized by almost everybody. I don't know, maybe people from McDonald's or the upcoming Popeyes or any of the others want a beef. And that you're also going to have the parking structure right there in front of those buildings.
And.
Yeah, so you're speaking of the McDonald's here that has their parking here?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's people sometimes that do utilize the other parking lot. And I know people that use the mall itself actually sometimes park in there as well. Not as much these days, but they have in the past. There are events that go on there, like GD's Playhouse has events on a yearly basis, and that whole parking lot is almost full. And if you take that parking lot away, I don't know where all the people are going to go to park. They certainly won't be able to park in the special parking lot for the apartments. Also, the height of these apartments, I'm surprised the townhouse people, when you had the meeting, didn't complain that about a five-story apartment building next to these townhouses, which are kind of, if you live in those townhouses, all you're going to see is a big building.
Yep, so this is the image there. That's what you would see. And Karen was there. I, I didn't hear any, I mean, you had mentioned that to me personally about the height potentially. And Karen had made some recommend, recommendations there. But most of the concerns from the neighborhood that I heard, Karen, you can certainly correct me on this, was related to parking and the econ, or the traffic and the potential economic impact.
Just for the record, I facilitated the meeting, but I did not participate in it.
Yeah.
Talked to Chris afterwards for a little bit. There were concerns about the height that I heard of, too. Maybe not as much vocally at the meeting. There were other people who talked about it. And, you know, I was concerned about the five stories. One of the biggest concerns by people there that night were the traffic and the traffic patterns and the parking. And that was, there were a couple of people about the values of the home and that, but I think that was just personal opinions on their part.
Sure.
So go on with your questions.
Well, I don't know if there are more concerns than questions. I'll pass it on to trustee Palafas for now.
I simply just don't see where you're going to fit 780 spots. I mean, you talk about a parking garage.
Yeah, so it's a six-level garage there, and that's where the vast majority of the stalls are going.
Well, you're referencing the apartment complex that's currently under construction across from the McDonald's on El Gonquin Road, right? The one that you unvisited today?
The one I went and visited today was the Veridian project, which is next to Topgolf and Schaumburg.
But those aren't apartments. Those are row homes. Right. Those are row homes or townhouses.
There's a, there's a row home.
Let me finish, please. The row homes are off of El Gonquin Road that are, you know, in that kind of U-shaped design in Veridian. The apartment complexes are the ones across the street that have the multi-layer parking garage, which aren't done yet. And then there's some other new apartments, which, you know, Chris Reed and all those guys came in when they were looking at doing something in Plum Farms, that developed that. But that's, that's not decked out. The only decked parking over there is the one that's currently under construction with a similar type of profile.
Okay, so the Veridian complex, can I see this? So this is the Veridian.
I know exactly what the Veridian is. I drive by it seven times every day.
Yeah, so the townhomes that you're referring to are here.
Right.
The apartment complex I'm referring to, the Element at Veridian, is back here.
Right.
And so that, it has a structured parking garage that's similar to what we would be proposing, that you can't see.
That structured parking garage has 780 spots.
No, no, this project's not as big as our project.
Oh, no, it's, it's maybe a third.
All right.
But what I'm saying is. But what I'm saying is, you know, that, that's essentially two buildings. You know, the one, the bigger one that is decked out multiple layers, that's kind of more of the size of yours is across the street, which you couldn't miss if you were driving past it.
The one on Moon Lake right over here?
No, the one across from Veridian and the McDonald's and, you know, the area.
Yeah, the one that's under construction, yeah, I'm familiar with that one. Yeah. I, I don't know if they have structured parking there or not.
Well, it's a multi-layer parking deck, so it's gotta be. But my comment is, I don't, I don't see in your designs here how you can fit seven hundred and eighty spots. So essentially what you're saying is if you have five decks, you're going to put a hundred and fifty-six spots per deck. That's it. That's a huge structure.
Yeah, no, it's a big parking structure. Yeah. I mean, they, we, they counted it out.
Who's they?
My, my in-house architects.
Okay, so they, they counted out seven hundred and eighty, a hundred and fifty-six per deck.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, this is a seven and, seven and a half acre site, yeah.
No, I understand the acreage and.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a five hundred and fifty stall garage on three and a half acres in Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Okay. The only thing, then maybe, you know, you're exempt from snow, you know, from, I don't, I don't know how, you know, those types of facilities accommodate for snow removal and whatnot. May, maybe it's not a problem. But when the neighbors who pulled me aside at church on Sunday talked about this development, their issues, Monica and John and their group, it was, their issues were height, the parking of almost eight hundred cars and the layout of, you know, how the traffic is going to flow. And we can all enlist the help of, you know, subject matter experts to tell the kind of story we want. But when reality comes, the concerns are real. And, you know, as for mentioned, that's just, it'd be, it'd be a culture change for sure for that area. Because that lot has been used for a lot of things other than what it would be used for in your proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I think, personally, I think, you know, having, it would be having more residents there within the, to service the community or the commercial space, I think would be a benefit. And personally, I think having, you know, that many more residents there is going to have a great impact and just create a more vibrant space for those folks that run their businesses and those commercial tenants.
Well, definitely, you know, with that many rooftops and, and people, yeah, it increases your spending power. I'm not arguing that in any way.
Is this project financially feasible if you only were to construct one building?
Is it financially feasible?
Feasible, yeah, for you.
I wouldn't do it, no.
I was curious. Trustee Mills?
You through, Terry?
Yeah, I'm done for now.
Okay. First of all, you keep saying the seven hundred and eighty parking stalls. That's not all in the garage, is it?
So.
Which is in the garage.
Yeah, there are six hundred and six. And, or no, there's, let's see here, six hundred and forty, or six fifty in the garage. And then there's those parallel stalls kind of going around it there. And there's sixty-three standards and sixty-seven parallels. So if you see, the standard stalls would be along here. And the parallel stalls are around along here.
And where's the handicap?
The handicap stalls, they would be inside the structured parking garage.
Okay, but that's quite a distance from your third building. Keep that in mind, that you're putting six hundred and fifty spaces in a garage that basically would be serving the first building. And you've got two other buildings that.
I mean, they would be all, it's all interconnected, the building. And so.
With the other buildings?
Correct, yeah.
How is it interconnected?
You see this, kind of this, the cars drive under here?
Yeah.
It's got this breezeway kind of, like a.
But you've also, so it's over the internal drive?
Correct. Yeah, so that's what.
What floor would be, would it be coming in at? The second floor or the third floor?
So it'd be two floor. So if you look here on this, go back here. So the first, so it's five stories. So the first two stories that pass through would basically be, you just take the two stories out and kind of push a wedge through it. And then there's three levels above that.
Okay, so for traffic, trucks or anything that are using that back road?
Yeah, it'll be clear. It's like twenty, higher than a bridge, yeah.
So then if that's the case, then anybody in that third building, all the way furthest to the, which direction am I going here?
North.
North?
Yep.
They'd have to walk through three apartment buildings to get to theirs.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, for all intensive purposes, to them, when they look at it, it's just going to look like one big building.
Okay, I mean, I, the concept of the class A apartments are great. But keeping in mind, you're talking six hundred there, we've got three hundred going up kitty corner to this project. It just seems like a lot of apartments in one location. And when you talk about Veridian being at north of ninety-five percent, they're only about one-third of the apartments that you're going to have here. So that does make a difference. It's hard to compare apples to apples with that. I mean, yes, they're in demand, but there's also a lot less than you're going to have here. That's just a point I'm making on that comment. I do have a problem with the parking, parallel parking stalls along the internal road. I don't, I think it's going to be, and I know this came up a lot at the meeting that you had with the homeowners there, of possible accidents with people going through there because of the way the road is right now. It do, it goes down, swerves down, swerves up a little bit where the manhole covers are. And it's tricky to get through there to begin with. And if you're going to be narrowing it, that could be a concern with cars going through there. Secondly, when you get to the back, the, the north end of that internal road, will you still be able to get back behind the medical building that's there?
So I think you're referring to.
It almost looks like a dead end's there, right there, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's, that's just a graphical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure of that because people do go through there. Especially with that medical section there. I am concerned about the five feet, the five stories. That was definitely, I know I told you that before.
Yes, and I think, yeah, you had mentioned this, yeah. I think Karen, maybe you had mentioned, you know, we kind of have this modern farmhouse look with this gable roof on here. And so, yeah, that's about thirty feet of height on that gable. And I think maybe you had recommended, well, maybe.
I had said, you know, was it a possibility that that might burn the height down a little bit?
Yeah, go to a flat roof.
But flat roofs aren't always the best solution either in this kind of climate. As I said before, the six hundred units just seems like a, a lot for that area. And I'll be very definitely interested in seeing the traffic study of how they account for all of it. And I'll be really honest upfront, I didn't realize when I first looked at the pictures that you were taking that whole parking lot. I thought you were trying to put three buildings just on the grassy area.
Nope.
So that's still a lot. You know, it's going to make a major difference in that neighborhood, but time, time goes on. I know, I understand that and.
Yeah, so it comes out and, I mean, I would argue there's still, I mean, personally, I don't like seeing seas of parking and asphalt.
I know, I agree.
And so I think there's still, I mean, there's a bunch of parking out here, yeah. Yeah, the neighbors had alluded to that, you know, that area being like their dog run area. Yeah, I understand that, so.
One question to staff, now this is in a TIF area, but this would not be TIF eligible, right?
Yeah, and they're not seeking.
I was going to say, we never TIF apartments.
Well, but that's not true. Apartments are considered commercial properties. And this is, oh yeah, see you got head bobbing.
But we don't normally TIF residential.
It's not residential, it's commercial, it's apartments.
They're not seeking, they're not seeking an incentive.
Just wanted to clarify.
There are some, there are some village infrastructure matters over there as relates to our sanitary sewer line that we'll be addressing here in the near term, that we may look to use some TIF funding. But that's, that's our infrastructure, not the developers.
Okay, and we've closed out that TIF anyway, didn't we?
No, the one across the street.
The one across the street, okay. Yeah, that's basically where I come from. Like I said, I think it, it has potential. However, it's just too much in my mind, that's all.
Trustee Erin up.
So where you have the parallel parking at the end there?
Yes.
Is there enough room, staff, probably you guys would know, for emergency vehicles to go around?
Yeah, so for a, the reason we need the road going around the building is for a fire loop, you have to have twenty-five feet for your fire lane. And so again, like this, by adding the parallel parking stalls there around the building, it creates more of like a pedestrian environment and slows the traffic down. If you just strip all, you know, if you just make it basically like a raceway or a regular road and take all the parallel parking away from it, then that acceler, like those are, these are traffic calming. The, like putting parallel parking slows down the traffic. Putting raised medians and crosswalks slows down the traffic. And so that's the reason we did those things is we want to try to create a more pedestrian. We honestly don't want people going that way to, you know, using it as basically a pass through to get to the north. And so that's why we located our parking structure on the south. And yeah, really, the only, you know, the, the reason, the only reason we really have that loop around the building is not for vehicular circulation for us, it's purely for fire access to the building and to maintain the existing circulation path that's already established and for the commercial folks and the medical offices and stuff. Not, not to create like a raceway basically for prospective tenants or people cutting through there.
Well, the parking lot has been used for raceways, so.
Yeah, so that's, we're trying to address that, yeah.
Yeah, are you guys having elevators in each building or?
Yes, certainly.
For handicap people?
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, there'd probably be, probably eight elevators at least. Probably four, four banks of two.
I mean, I, I think it would be nice to finally do something with that area, but like trustee Mills, I'm just not sure it's, it's going to fit the way it should fit. But that's my personal opinion. And you have six hundred and eighty units all around that complex right there. So that's, that's a huge change for all of them.
Yeah, I would agree. There's, you have significant, like, well, let's see here, the, well, there's seven hundred and ninety units, so another, almost two hundred units or, you know, in the, you know, what I would call class B product to the north there. And then there was, you know, you had the, the folks who came in and did the study. I mean, I think they said the, your normal absorption here, that you could absorb at least, I think, that many apartments for the foreseeable future every year. And so I would make the argument that there, again, there's huge pent up demand. And that's why we're interested in building here.
I'll be honest with you, I, I like your product. But if you had the whole Barrington Square to do it in, I think it would be fine. But in this spot, I think it's too crowded. But that's just my one man's opinion. Trustee Mills?
One other question, I know I brought this up before to you. What is you phasing in? Which building comes first, second, third?
So we would want to, building a project like this is probably going to take a total of about three years. And so we would build the southern, we would start basically with the parking structure. And then, I mean, for all intensive purposes, it'd just be continual construction. But we would open up, try to get a TCO on the south half of the building and we would have like our amenity spaces are in this building and our leasing office.
All of that's going to be in the first building?
In this first building and this first, kind of this first one here. And, and so we don't want to hit the market with six hundred units all at once. We'd hit it with, you know, around three hundred units and then open it, lease that in six to seven months and then the other one would come after that.
So you would build to the, to the.
Yeah, we'd build from south to north.
Okay.
And, yeah, we've had success doing that in the past, so.
So that brings up a question. If you find that the demand doesn't exist for the third building, would that be possibly a deal breaker?
No, I mean, we, we would fully finance it. I mean, yeah, there's a parable from the Bible that says, hey, you want to consider, you know, count the costs before you, before you go build a tower, you want to count the cost and, you know, you don't want your, the people to say, oh, you fool. And not have the money to go build the whole thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Palos? Just a few things. I'm much more binary, so I'm going to give you the ones and zeros of the way I see this. I can make the math work. And if you're around tomorrow, we can drive over and see the seven-story deck that they put on across from Veridian. And it takes a whole lot of land to build that thing. I just don't know how you're going to do it successfully without impeding the businesses that are currently there in the other areas. Aside from that, when I get, when I talk about the math, the industry standard is one point two five per unit and you're at one point three, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that's thirty spots in terms of your proposal. So the reason it's one point two five is because the math works out across units in terms of every fourth unit picks up a spot. So at one point three, the math doesn't work, but it's a ratio, I get it. But it's favorable in terms of your proposal for you. I just, I just don't, I mean, I'm curious to see what you come back with in terms of your study and your, you know, best of the best guy. But in, in terms of, in terms of the mathematics for the parking, you know, and even the back access, I mean, we're talking six stories, right? There's only a few in town that are that high. And there's only one truck in our fire truck arsenal that's going to get that high if you have a structure fire. And they're going to need all of that road without people parked there to boom that ladder up there. So I don't know.
Yeah, so you're, you're correct, all the, the access and you have to have, when you boom your ladder truck in there, it has to have certain angles and, you know, we take all, I've been, we're building a six hundred and fifteen unit project in Lakewood, Colorado on three and a half acres. So it's half the size of this. And yeah, we're, we're doing those things.
And the, the references are great. And I love Colorado, but I don't know if I care about Colorado. What I'm talking and thinking about is worst case scenario, right? You get six inches of snow and tomorrow there's a fire. Where do you put that ladder truck?
Yeah, so I mean, we've got a project in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And with, there's, like, you have to have, like, for instance, this, this area here where there's lands, you basically have to have an area where you basically pile snow up.
And so where is that here?
Well, I mean, it could be here or in these, usually you do it in the corners.
I mean, they use front loaders to do that, okay.
Yep, and you just push it in there and, yeah, I mean, again, the nice thing about this is it's.
The math's not working for me. I get it, I understand what you're saying. I love the concept. It's, the pictures are beautiful, but I just can't make the math work.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I mean, yeah, I mean, the architect, they drew it up and, you know, I guess count, count parking stalls, but yeah, I'm fully confident that the parking amount is in that garage, so.
Anyone else?
Yes. The one comment I would make, if you elect to proceed, it would be interesting when you do your traffic analysis and you have referred to this a little bit in your presentation, to compare against what the traffic counts and impact was when Menards was there. So as you pointed out, you know, there hasn't been, Menards there for what, a long time, right? And so the expectation. Long time, right? And so the expectation is more akin to an open space. So although you're comparing yourself today to an open space, uh, and, and this would be true for any development there for that matter. Um, I think comparing it to what the impact would be, which when you get to a big box store like that, you're going to get a lot of traffic as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And that would be my hypothesis or assertion is that. When the Menards was there, there were, there's a lot more daily trips going to and from that store. Than when a 600 unit apartment complex is going to be there.
Do you know how many surface spots are there now on that lot?
I do not. Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Maybe Pete does. Yes, trustee gate. Do you have a question?
Well, I'm not necessarily a question. Not necessarily a question, but I like the whole concept of what they're presenting. And where they're presenting it. I think that it's going to be, yeah, a plus thing. For Hoffman Estates all the way around. I just wanted to get as far as the numbers on it. Uh, yes, trustee Palatas, we know that you're good with numbers. But sometimes the numbers don't exactly, exactly what you look at or come up to. But anyways, I just wanted to, I just wanted to get my opinion in there that I think this is an. And the area needs something like that. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Uh, Pete, do you know the number of stalls that are there?
Not, not exactly. There could be three, 400 spaces. Um. I, I don't know what their, what the total count is exactly. Um, and, and obviously as, as village manager pointed out. Um, the area was very busy when Menards was fully functioning. Plus they had a pretty large outdoor. Um, storage area with their, uh, material sales and things. So. The lot, obviously people have gotten used to the vacant grass and open space and they've gotten used to vacant parking lot for activities, but otherwise it also invites a lot of problems and. Um, it's not very productive. It's really an in between situation. Um, the landowner, it's not been that long ago that, um, the property was subdivided. So this, the grass and the parking lot are all one subdivided lot. Um, and that's what the owner has put on the market and they're looking to sell it as one parcel. So that parking is not. Doesn't really belong to any of the other businesses in the area at this point. It's, it's essentially a vacant lot that just has a leftover parking lot on it that. Um, eventually we're like, whether it's this project or some other, we're going to continue to see redevelopment of it, um, as, as part of the proposals.
Yeah. I mean, these area business CFC are like, I went and had supper here and I mean. Their parking is met by this lot here on, on their property. And then this one's met the McDonald's by. Their parking here. And I mean, each one of these businesses and. You know, this was the Menards and so this was the Menards parking. And so this is the. So I don't really see how we're displacing anyone's parking. You know, the, this is the strip center. This is their parking. And so.
You haven't been here when Gigi had their. Their event. Uh, trustee Palatas?
Uh, so in all fairness, Pete, up until a few years ago, the Dutch wouldn't sell this place. It was lease only, right? That's why we lost Walmart. Correct. Walmart wanted to build their green store. Right. They dumped them because they wouldn't sell.
Yeah, that's, it's, they, they changed their whole philosophy and, you know, McDonald's, bone of beef, uh, Popeyes, 7-Eleven, all those individual outlots. They all got formally subdivided and they're all been being purchased. So it's. It, it, you know, what we've been used to for many, 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 many years is one ownership, not selling. Kind of trying to keep everything cohesively whole. Um, and you've seen what that's got us. Uh, once they. You know, turn the corner and, and obviously the market is strong, but they, they kind of changed their approach to things. Um, it was clearly very important for a lot of these developers and these businesses to own and retain their own property. Um, and, you know, they've got the framework in place, obviously for all the, the major common access roads are, are set with easements and. Everything will be able to function properly. It's just a matter of filling in these building blocks on the site. This one obviously happens to be a very large building block. So.
And to finish up, I, I love the establishment of place. The whole concept of work, play, live, you know, is, is.
It's already there. Like I think a lot of times you have to build the apartments first and then the retail and all those great things come. But. I mean, that's honestly one of the things that makes us most excited about it is. Everything's there but the people and we can provide the people.
Sure. You just have to convince me on the math. I got you at about 650, maybe 70 spots.
Yeah, I can.
Based on just single square footage at.
Same as the plan.
Not yours. So, yeah. Okay.
And I'll point out that we don't do a lot of parking garages. It's, we, we have in the past in office buildings, but the, the site plan process, process includes the full. Architectural, uh, plans for the garage. So that's something we review. Carefully as part of our plans, the space dimensions, the lighting inside the garage. So those would all be part of the, the site plan package that would come before you. So you can actually count every single space if you would like. Um, it'll be all part of the package.
Anymore? I'm good. Okay. Anybody else that wishes to address us here before we, uh, say goodnight? For this project at least. Okay. I guess that is a wrap. Thank you for coming before us. Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Number three on our new business is a request authorization of A, an agreement with Odyssey for radio and digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates in the amount of $65,000. B, an agreement with NBC Universal for television and streaming and digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates. In the amount of $68,000 and C, an agreement with iHeart Media for. Television and streaming digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates in the amount of $80,000. Kevin, you can take it away.
Good evening. Uh, good to see you all again. Um, just a little background on, on all three of these, as well as just kind of a general. Marketing and advertising plan for the village. Um, so in the past, we've used various methods to market, um, both from an economic development standpoint and just a, a general brand standpoint to. Bring in new development, uh, and, and like I said, build our brand, everything from print, whether it's trade journals or newspapers to. Um, online, online trade journals or e-blast that might get sent out. Um, a couple of years ago, trying some radio out, um, with WBDM. And then, uh, even trade shows there. Uh, I purposely picked this one, uh, as, as it's a throwback to even before I started. So. Uh, a, as you know, whether it's ICSC or some of the real estate journal conferences that we've been to, um, just to promote Hoffman Estate. So. Um, 2023 is no different though. Uh, we, we kind of wanted to step it up a bit and, uh, got our whole team together to talk about. You know, why are we doing this? What's the why? Um, why are we marketing? Why are, why are we advertising ourselves? And, and it really came down to three things. GOB. Um, to growing our, our tax base, uh, and even to some degree diversifying it a little bit more. Um, to offering, telling about our offerings and amenities that we have here and, and our services, the great services we do have. Uh, and then finally just to B, build momentum, um, get people talking about Hoffman Estates. So. More people talk about it that, that they'll have to take a look at us, uh, and, and either what we're doing or want to be a part of it. Um, so the other thing we talked about was, was trying some, maybe some new outlets, some new tactics. Um, particularly for me, uh, things that I could measure, um, because putting an ad in, in a magazine. Uh, is, is nice. And when they tell me, yeah, we print 40,000 copies of this magazine. Okay. But I, I don't know if all 40,000 got read, much less if the person stopped and looked at our ad. On page 67 in the bottom corner and then thought, boy, that looks great. I want to talk to Kevin in Hoffman Estate. So. Um, a, a, a lot of it came back to what can I measure? Uh, and, and so going a little bit more digital. Uh, to some degree this year with, with some of the things we're doing. Um, again, it, it's still, uh, going online, whether it's ads there or specifically targeting. Um, demographics, or if you are a business owner or a real estate professional, um, or a broker. Uh, we can get on your cell phone with our ad when you are scrolling on wherever you're scrolling on or getting your news from wherever you're getting your news. Um, but we can also target, uh, if you go to a certain conference, I can target you after that conference. Um, and, and kind of pester you a little bit with ads. Um, and so doing some of those things. Uh, and, and then finally, um, really whether it's new, uh, old, but new to us. Um, whether it's through TV, radio or, or streaming even for all the streaming services that so many people have. And again, they're. Targeting specific metros. Um, so you can see on there, I, I wrote like targeting data center metros, uh, metros where data centers are growing because. As we know, um, trying to attract, uh, uh, another data center or two to town wouldn't be the worst thing. Um, so that was kind of the, the concept we came up with marketing plan for this year. Uh, and then the, the concept we came up with was, was feel the energy. Um, and, and so here's just a few renderings. This was from, uh, as their mayor mentioned, the, the tour we had. Um, just something that, that shows some excitement. Um, we haven't zeroed in on the exact form that we'll go with, but. Um, something that, that conveys energy and excitement, whether it's for entertainment. Or retail or restaurants or hotels or feeling the energy, uh, pun intended with data centers who need energy. Um, so really trying to, trying to go a, a few different routes. Um. And then again, just some other examples of ads that, that might pop up on, on your phone if you're in the data center or the commercial real estate. Or just a business owner in, in certain metros and markets. Um. And then again, a few more. Here's some of the ones that we're already doing on banner ads, uh, within very targeted. Sectors. So for anybody reading this data center article or wanting to know more about Illinois, uh, in this, in this trade journal. Uh, and again, all of these things are very measurable, right? So I can, I can get reports from how many people clicked on it to. Uh, with, with some of them, who clicked on it? If it's an e-blast and, and it's very specific that e-blast is to your email. Um, for, for some of these, um. Advertisers that we work with, I can even see who clicked on it, um, so that I can cold call and follow up with them. Um, so tonight though. Uh, as I said, kind of, kind of branching out and trying a few new forms. Um, Odyssey, we, we had worked with, uh, back in 2021 to do a similar campaign. Uh, advertising on the, uh, traffic and weather. And so this, uh, proposal tonight is the same. Uh, it'd be about six months, um, the, some of the busier months kind of skipping over summer when maybe people are more on vacation. So they're not in their car as much. Um, but 15 and 30 second ads on WBDM. Um, that, that would play as traffic and weather sponsors. So, uh, if you listen to WBDM, traffic and weather on the eights. Uh, so, so we would have, um, impressions there. So we would have ads in those time slots. Um, not every on the eight, but, uh, it would be spread out. Um, and again, it's in, it's in the Chicago area primarily. Uh, and so we, we'd be marketing to somebody who generally knows about Hoffman Estates, but this would go in that building momentum category. So. Just getting people to talk a little bit more about Hoffman Estates. Um, and again, with this proposal also includes periodical check-ins, uh, with them to see, you know, how's our performance doing? Where do we need to tweak? Do we need to do more? You know, maybe Tuesdays and Thursdays seem to, to get more activity. So let's. Move our impressions to there. Uh, and then funds from this one is coming from both the general fund that's budgeted as well as, uh, the Lakewood Center TIF. Fund. Um, and then the NBC Universal proposal, uh, these are 15 and 30 second video commercials. Um, that we've done in the past during Windy City Bulls games and we would still do the same. Um, but then the other thing here is, is we would target five metros. Uh, and so I'm, I'm targeting Chicago, Washington DC, Portland. Uh, Phoenix and Dallas. Um, but again, those could change throughout the year if we decide, but those are five of the. Either already high in, in the data center world or growing in the data center world. So the idea here is. Uh, maybe you're traveling to Portland because your, your company is building a new data center there. Uh, and okay, I'm going to stay there for three or four days to check on the progress. I'm staying in the hotel, uh, and I wake up in the morning. I'm getting ready. Uh, and oh, I flip on NBC and I see an ad for Hoffman Estates and don't think much of it. I go somewhere else. Uh, all of a sudden my ad is popping up on Hoffman Estates is popping up on their phone as well. Uh, and then maybe they see a, an article of, hey, data centers coming to Hoffman Estates. Uh, all of a sudden they're thinking, man, I've, I've seen them more often. So that's the idea behind targeting certain metros. Um, is we can even target the metro and then the, 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 the demographic within the metro. Um, so with this proposal, uh, it would be 1.78 million impressions, uh, meaning reaching that many people. Throughout the, the remaining 10 months of 2023 and same kind of thing, doing periodic checks. Um, on, on how we're doing, uh, with, with different performance metrics. Uh, and the, the funding from this is coming from the general fund and then the Rosel Road TIF fund. Uh, and then finally, uh, is the proposal for iHeart Media. Uh, and so this is utilizing their total traffic and weather network. Um, so this is. 10 second commercials either going into a news program. Um, so if you picture, you know, watching. Um, NBC or Fox, you turn on Fox News, uh, uh, in the morning here in Chicago on channel 32 and. Uh, just as it's coming back from commercial, you get a 10 second Hoffman Estates commercial and then it goes to the anchor to tell you the morning news. Um, and, and that's where these spots would be played. Um, again, targeting three metros here, Chicago, Portland and DC. Uh, again, to, to kind of get some of those data center markets. So that's kind of where we're, we're starting off for the first few months here. Uh, is targeting those markets. Uh, and then supplementing it with some of the iHeart Media, um. Uh, audio, radio, uh, spots as well. So this would be a 30 second ad during their, their streaming app. So anybody listening, whether it's on your phone or. On your computer in the car, hitting the iHeart, um, iHeart Radio app to listen in the Chicago market, you're going to get our impressions there. And so, uh. That's another 1.2 million impressions with an extra 125,000 banners. Cause when you, when you pull up their ad on, on your phone or. Excuse me, their app on your phone, say, I want to listen to iHeart Radio in Chicago. Um, you get, usually get a little, little banner at the bottom. So, um, that's 125,000 banner pop-ups as well. Um, again, to the targeted demographic who, who we can target. So. Um, same thing, periodic checks and then funding from this is from the, um, the Higgins Hassel TIF that we were just talking about, uh, as well as the Lakewood TIF. Um, so a lot of information in those three, but I'll take questions.
You know, you had me on a lot of things, except when you started saying that we're using TIF funds for this.
Sure.
What's the basis for that?
So TIF, TIF funds can be used for a variety of things. For specific, we're putting in a new water main. Or we're advertising, we're marketing to, to draw more attention and, and get more projects to this TIF. Um, so a, as an example, um. Partial, part of our costs going out to ICSC the past, however many years can be allocated to certain TIFs and, and we have, whether it was. Um, like the Barrington Square TIF there where, okay, we had three meetings and, and really we're promoting them to a few others. We'll add, allocate a portion of the ICSC trade show costs to the TIF. Um, so that's where some of those TIF funds can come into play.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
Um, I think it's great doing the marketing in certain areas. I was just surprised you had nothing in California. Isn't that?
I, I, I can, um, like Silicon Valley is a huge data center area. Um, you get more bang for your buck in other markets. So like I looked at LA and it was like impressions went. We can give you 1.2 million impressions to, we can give you 300,000 impressions for the same price. Um, and, and then I, I recently got a, a new report from, ooh, I'm going to forget. One of the big houses, I, I want to say it was maybe Cushman and Wakefield. Talking about data centers around the world. Um, and I was surprised they, they ranked them on 15 different, um, criteria. And DC was up there, right? Like Northern Virginia is kind of the granddaddy of all data centers. Um, but they were saying how Portland is on the rise and how a lot of the groups invest that are invested here are, are starting to build in Portland. And they were actually tied with, um, Northern Virginia as the best data center markets in the world. Um, and Chicago was tied for, for, for fifth on the list. Um, so, so we're moving up. Um, but yeah, that, that's why I kind of, I didn't target the LA's, the Silicon Valleys of the world, because you didn't get as much.
Sure.
For your money there. Yeah.
I think this is a great use of funds. Um, I'm, the commercials that you had on BBM. I know we all heard them and it was kind of fun to hear it. Yeah. Um, and I think expanding it all is the super thing to do. So thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Trustee Palatas? Kevin, as you target data centers, are you targeting like corporate or colo or both?
Um.
Like Microsoft would be considered a colo.
Yeah, uh, probably both. Um, I, I don't think I'm necessar, I, I don't think I can necessarily get that detailed into whom I'm targeting. It's more. If you have data center in your title or company or any of that, that's who we're going to target. Um, and, and then I think to the other part of it, uh, you know, there, there's a few different data center conferences out there, whether it's. Data Center World or, um, Seven by 24, or the other one is the, the DC AC Data Center Anti-Conference. Um, and, and so what I can, I, I can get a list of everybody who attended and I can say, hey, go target these companies that attended. Um, so kind of both and, and neither to some degree, because I can't get that specific.
And do we, do we know of any like, um, anything the county or the state are doing as. Uh. Infrastructure upgrades to like the fiber backbones? I mean, that, that, that's why Northern Virginia, 70% of the world's internet traffic flows through Nova. Um. Because there's so much fiber there and plus at ATMs under the ocean, right across the pond.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm curious, it, it. Um, but I'm curious, i- i- if they were or if we were, or if there was some co-op, uh like there's big data centers out in Oak Grove and you know, they've extended a lot of those networks. Uh, they're like in, in the internet world, it'd be like a twelve-lane highway, optical circuits is what they're called. Um, do we know if they're doing any investment? That would be good to know because uh we could piggyback on some of those things and that, that's. Now, the companies that like Microsoft that are selecting us know that.
Know that, yeah.
But you know, for the companies that might not, uh that would be a, you know, amazing benefit to piggyback onto that.
Yeah, I, I don't know uh what the state's doing, but that's a good point. And, and even if, you know, even if we can't help them necessarily, if they're doing something, I want to talk about it. I, I want to tell the people not Illinois that don't know about it.
Right.
About it, but yeah, to your point, some of them already know, um but it's still good to, to tout.
And actually Karen knows, a lot of them are moving out of California because of fires and mudslides and earthquakes.
And no water.
Right, and we, and water is a big cooling component of data centers or glycol. Uh, so a lot of them are, you know, plus a lot of corporations are moving out of there.
That's why I thought, you know, then you want to attract those people.
Right, right, so. Uh, corporate data centers are much smaller than colos, but I was just curious.
Yeah, a- and we can certainly look at, at California, even if it's the second half of the year, right? Um, and even if it is a few less impressions, that's okay. Um, I'm finding that, that in, in this marketing and advertising world, especially with TV streaming, um uh whether it's like targeted podcasts or anything like that, um dollars go up really quick.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm trying, trying to make it stretch, but still have an impact.
That's great, no, I think it's fine what you're doing.
And anyone else with any questions up here? Okay, we have a motion in a second?
No, I don't think we do, I'll make the motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. And uh we need a roll call.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Stanton?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.
Trustee Palatas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, now we have reports, three of them. For information only, first is the Planning Division Monthly Report. Any questions here on that from anybody? Okay, that'll be received and filed. Second is the Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Any questions? That'll be received and filed. And third is the Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. We have Kevin right in front of us and uh go ahead, trustee.
I was just going to brag on him and tell him, you know, talk to you all about the CRE event was a blowout that we had at the arena last week and uh I think it was probably five times as big as last year and everybody was really excited to be there and uh we had people coming up to us saying that they had investors. They love the new uh Stonington, you know, Pembroke TIF, uh especially given the fact that we own a few of the properties. They're very interested in that, you know, I ninety frontage road, what can we do there? Um, so a lot of excitement as well as Bellworks and others, of course, but uh that one, that one led the way. And it was my role just to get the people that were talking to me to Kevin or Jenny as fast as I could, you know, so uh they were pretty happy to. I did, I felt, I, well, you know, I called you on my way out of there, told you, told you what a blowout it was, but it was great. Uh, thanks for all that hard work, Kevin, looking forward to more.
Did you ever get back everything that was taken that was not supposed to have been taken?
We did find it all, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was found. Uh, it was not taken by any of our, our attendees.
Okay, it was just misplaced.
Exactly, uh and, and I do want to say, if I may, I, I think I said in the report that there would be a photo and by Friday or Thursday afternoon, I was tired and had forgotten to include a photo. So here's a few photos of the event. Uh, yes, it was a lot of fun and I do need to, to give credit uh both to Phil and Michael uh in the planning department for not only their creativity, but just helping pulling it all off.
Yeah, it looked very wonderful.
Yeah, when they dumped the confetti on you, that was a high point.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, that'll be received and filed, that report, President's report.
Uh, nothing else, trustee Stanton.
Thank you, we have nothing in other or items in review, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call on that, please.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Stanton?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.
Trustee Palatas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And we save the best for last, right Suzanne?
Fighting.
Good evening, I'd like to call the General Administration and Personnel Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Arnett?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Mills?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Noel?
Present.
Trustee Palatas?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. If I can have a motion uh for the approval of minutes for January ninth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second. Anybody have any questions, corrections? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.
Trustee Palatas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion has been passed. We have one new item under new business. Number one, request authorization to waive bidding and award the replacement of video editing systems to Key Code Media out of Schaumburg, Illinois in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Say it.
Thank you, Ms. Suzanne?
Good evening. Uh, this item includes uh the replacement of multimedia production equipment, which is used for production of the village's cable channel um and YouTube channel. Um, so all the good um recordings of all of our events and other things that, that are available to, to our subscribers out there. Um, included in this request are two workstations that are used by Rick and his staff um to do that production as well as a storage device, um where the large video files and other things are stored. Um, those were last replaced both um as a package in twenty fourteen, um which is an eternity um when it comes to technology. And so we're starting to see some equipment failures and other things, so um it is time to replace this, these items. Staff went ahead and obtained three quotes for this work. Um, included in here is not only um the equipment itself, but also professional services as well as technical assistance. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we were um getting the, the best uh equipment as well as the best assistance that we could there. Um, and therefore, um staff has requested to waive bids for this because there's, of that professional services component primarily. Um, we did go ahead and get those three quotes, obviously just to prove out though that the pricing was appropriate. Um, they came back um with our local vendor in Schaumburg, um which is Key Code Media, um as the lowest of those three quotes. Um, they are located in Schaumburg, which is um definitely helpful for us um from a service perspective, um as well as they provide installation services along, along with the equipment. So um that's really um going to be a benefit um to us. Uh, Key Code is a trusted vendor for us. They have done um quite a bit of work for the village, including the AV replacement in this room that we're sitting in currently um a couple of years ago. So um we have faith that they can execute this project um well and within, within the budgeted amount that they've, that they've given us. Um, the funding from this project is going to come from PEG fees, which is essentially a user fee um that cable subscribers pay. And so there's a kind of a set um, set funding, set, sorry, set um items that can, can be paid for out of PEG funding and that includes um capital purchases that go back into the cable funding. I mean, sorry, the cable function of the village. So with that, if anybody has any questions?
Thank you, trustee Palatas?
Just one. It looks like the lion's share of this is the storage uh pieces, which is understandable. Um, are, are we replicating that anywhere or backing it up somewhere trusted?
That is a great question for Rick. I can cer- I can certainly look into that.
We have to drag him out? Yeah, so okay.
Rick to the rescue.
Yes. Yes, basically it is a stand storage, it's stored in the back. So, oh, I get to use this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get to use the stuff you run.
Yeah, it's kind of weird, but uh, but yeah.
Are you replicating it anywhere or you're, you backing it up or?
We're going to keep the old sand that we currently use right now and then we're going to go ahead, uh use that kind of just as a backup as storage and then use the new sand um for pretty, pretty much data transfers for editing systems.
Great idea. And you have enough ports and all that to hook that up? I'm sure you do.
Yes, we do.
So explain to me why um these guys are such a great price? I mean, where did they shave off, services or product or what makes them so much cheaper than the other two?
They usually register their products and they have a lot of vendors and manufacturers that they work with to register. When they do that, they, they get a huge discount.
So you get a preferred pricing metal?
Yep. Hence a preferred vendor.
All right, that's all.
All right.
I'm good.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else?
That's it.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all those, uh roll call, please.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.
Trustee Palatas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion has been passed, thank you very much Suzanne. We move on to reports for information only. Number one is the Cable TV Monthly Report. Seeing none, we will go ahead and receive and file that. Number two is the Human Resources Management Monthly Report. Nothing, we'll go ahead and receive and file that. Number three is the Legislative and Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report. We'll go ahead and receive and file that. Uh, President's report, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing else, trustee Arnett.
Seeing nothing in other?
One, one thing in other. I just wanted to alert all of you that there's a new display out in the gallery from one of our north side residents who put up his uh photography today. That was it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll go ahead and take a look at it. Seeing nothing in other or items in review, may I have a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, others in favor, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnett?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.[1732.92]